I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Ms. Custody, we didn't have any...
No.
...missures wishing to speak? Do we have any Boarding Committee updates? We did have a Capitol Committee, but I'm gonna hold off because Mrs. Bezinski is going to present the outcome of that. So, anyone else? No meetings in Paris? No? Then we'll turn right over to the superintendents required.
Well, we have a presentation to start on a proposed capital construction project. We've spent a number of years working on this proposal because the work started before the pandemic hit and then, obviously, was halted throughout the pandemic and then picked up as time allowed in the last year or so. So, I'm happy to have our architects from Young &amp; Right here, Patrick and Rashawn, as well as Rick Gancy from Capital Markets and Carlo Zavadi from Turner Construction to present to you a proposed capital project scope. And then, you know, when they are finished with the presentation, obviously, there'll be time for the board to ask questions, but we will look for the board's, you know, verbal approval to move forward with the project because, as you can imagine, with a December 13th target date of a vote, there's a lot of things that need to be done in order to market it to the community. So, this is really an opportunity for you to look at a high-level scope, you know, a very general scope, and then we would move forward with continued planning with your blessing. So, welcome.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes?
Awesome, awesome. Well, it's good to see everybody again. My name is Rashawn Sunubi. First, I want to thank the administration and the board for allowing us to give this brief presentation on the proposed scope and budget of your next capital project. I'm joined today by Patrick with Young &amp; Right, Carlo Zavadi with Turner Construction, Rick Gancy with Capital Markets. So, the agenda today includes, we're gonna start with the schedule, then we'll dive into the process and the planning that it took to get where we are today. Patrick will talk about the scope and the goals of the capital project, and then Rick will get into the financials. Starting with the schedule. Late last year, we were discussing, we got into the financial analysis, and then, from there, Young &amp; Right did a full building condition survey to determine the needs of the buildings. We met with your, followed by that, with meeting with your Capitol Committee to determine the final scope of the project. Today, we are looking for, we're seeking the board's approval of that final scope and budget. From there, we are gonna move right into the seeker process. That's where your, the district's attorney dives into what we've created so far and create those legal documents for the seeker. We are looking for the board to adopt the resolutions for this project in October. From there, we'll move into legal notifications and publications and public meetings, and then a final vote in early December. So, that's the current state. The determining the scope sort of started with us really honing in on the educational needs of the district. The district held a series of user group meetings with the end-users at each school to determine what those educational needs would be. And this, they were focused on improved student spaces, improved spaces. There were new technology and improved student experiences that required upgrades to the facilities. The district then sort of categorized and listed all of those educational items and prioritized those items based on the critical needs of those educational priorities. Young &amp; Right then, on the other side, looked at the infrastructure needs by conducting a full BCS survey of all of the school districts. This included looking at masonry, windows, anything you can imagine as it relates to the actual building infrastructure systems. That's what we evaluated. We looked at health, safety, and welfare items within those buildings, ADA issues, other outstanding or items that were beyond their useful life as it pertains to the buildings. We then took, again, we took that list. We gave that to the facilities director and the buildings and grounds guys, and they prioritized based on what they felt were the critical needs of that, of those, of the buildings. And then, Young &amp; Right Architectural worked with Turner Construction to actually combine the educational needs with the BCS infrastructure needs into one final document. From there, we were able to give that document to the district, who, again, went through and prioritized based on the educational needs and the BCS critical needs to create the scope and budget for this final capital project. I'm gonna pass it over to Patrick, who's gonna dive into the goals of the capital project and the scope for the capital project.
Hey, Rashawn? So, over the course of the Capitol Committee's meetings, we kind of saw the same goals come up again and again. And those primary goals were the health, safety, and welfare of the buildings, the facility, infrastructure improvements, site improvements, and educational space improvements. So, we're gonna start as a district-wide and then hone in on to each individual building here. So, the first topic we kind of looked at was the safety and security enhancements across the district at each individual building. And these items kind of turned out to be main entry renovations to add secure entries at each building, add intrusion-resistant films to select windows and doors. These were kind of the primary entrances, the more vulnerable spaces. PA system with silent alarm capabilities. This one is at the middle school, Smallwood and Windermere, as the high school already has that. Intrusion lock sets on all doors, upgrading the security camera infrastructure, and upgrade exterior lighting. Another item we looked at was the auditoriums across the district. This is something that was both kind of a programmatic need from the school as well as multiple individual items identified in the BCS process. So, these items were the heating and ventilation systems, the stage lighting with LED replacements, stage sound system replacements, stage rigging, and a renovation of the high school auditorium. District-wide, another critical item identified throughout the BCS was MUP system upgrades. The first topic here, we have building-wide mechanical system replacements. This is a very extensive list of 50-plus items that were identified and prioritized through the Capitol Planning Committee. Upgrade unit ventilators in many classrooms. A lot of the infrastructure at the schools were exceeding their useful life, and given the pandemic situation over the previous years, district decided to move forward with upgrading unit ventilators that would allow us to have better filtration systems as well as less maintenance overall. Replacing the boilers at the high school and middle school. Replacing the antiquated pneumatic controls with digital controls. New hot water heaters. Chili snack board and food replacements. Upgrading the elevator systems. Upgrading the IT room, IT equipment rooms to be COE compliant. Smallwood cafeteria AC as well as the middle school cafeteria AC. Windermere plumbing fixtures, and then the Windermere pool filtration system. Getting to the individual buildings now. We have the high school starting off. High school, the south gym, was identified in a few different locations as needing a facelift. So, we're looking at four-year replacement, lighting upgrades, replacing the outdated mechanical systems, full window replacement, renovation of the adjacent locker rooms, and renovation of the adjacent bathroom. Site work. This is the space in between the middle school and high school. See the turf there on the edge? Looking at a multi-sport turf fields, field lighting, scoreboards, bleachers, new parking lot, and a team building with bathrooms. At the middle school, primary renovation was to renovate the career and life skills room to involve new finishes, new cabinets and appliances, and upgrade teacher technologies. Site work-wise, renovating the parent pickup and drop-off to improve traffic flow. This was identified by the school district as a safety and safety concern. There seems to be quite a bit of backup during this process. Smallwood Elementary. Main building renovations were looking to update the main entry corridor, provide new dividing partitions for classrooms, and extend the loading dock at the custodial entrance. Site work-wise, from the back, there's a carryover from the previous project. It's to renovate the tennis courts to align with the curriculum goals. So, shift it from kind of more of a tennis courts to a play space with a variety of activities. Renovate the parent pickup and drop-off to improve traffic flow. Windermere. Windermere, we have, in addition, this is to support the extension of the EPK program. It's a four-classroom addition with one indoor play space and a covered patio slash play space. The primary renovations would be adding electronic open functions and replacing the glass at stairwell doors. These are kind of, are egress doors that need a update to comply with current codes. Replacing the door closures, handles, and armors. Replacing various exterior doors. And replacing the boiler roof deck cover. Site work-wise, we're looking at the tennis courts. Again, similar to Smallwood, shifting from a tennis court to more of a flexible space with kind of a variety of opportunities. And renovating the drop-off loop to improve traffic. This brings us to the financials. We'll turn it over to...
The front part.
Angie, the front part.
Yeah, so... Do you have it on your sheet yet?
Oh, yeah, but we can't read it. I was asking if it was purposeful.
Is there a way to expand it, or on the screen, you know?
Press Ctrl+plus.
Ctrl+plus?
Ctrl+plus is something.
That's right.
All right.
When you did that, I think a zoom came up at the top.
Oh, okay.
Okay, can I have to go back to 100? Ctrl minus. That'd be helpful. I think the only thing you could do is expand the presentation mode so it's not in a tab and it fills the whole screen.
So, what are you trying to do on search?
Hit escape, maybe? And then hit slideshow.
It's a little better.
So, what we'll talk briefly about tonight is, we went through the presentation about the scope of the project, and we'll talk briefly about the, you know, the sizing of the project by building. So, we have, I would say, $34 million at the high school, $15 million at the middle school, and then Smallwood 7, and then Windermere 11. The way we structured the project, you know, by building, by phases, it's important because in prior meetings, we talked about maximum cost allowance and the limitations by building. So, the challenges that we have with this particular project are that, a lot of site work. So, site work...
Could you just explain to the rest of the board to understand, you know, what maximum cost allowance is?
Yeah, so, according to SED regulations, every building gets what's called a maximum cost allowance. What that means is that the state's gonna set a maximum amount that they're gonna aid for construction and then for incidental. And what incidental means is everything outside of the building envelope. And professional service fees, architect fees, and everything else that goes into a project. So, the challenge is, when you do a site work, parking lots, turf fields, that all comes under incidental allowance. So, in all school districts, that becomes a challenge when you have your large turf facilities or parking lots. And what that really translates to in this scenario is that, for example, the high school, it's a $34 million project, whereas $17 million construction and $17 million of incidental allowance. In this case, the maximum cost allowance for incidental is only about $9 million. So, $9.1 million of the total is 100% local share. So, across the board, middle school has about $784,000 of incidental allowance, you know, unaided. And then, Windermere is mostly the addition because the formula for additions for state aid purposes doesn't allow for as much work to be done as a renovation project. So, in this case, you have $11.1 million of the total project cost that's not eligible for building aid. In that case, it's 100% local share. So, as far as the aid goes on the project, you have $11.1 million of 100% local share. And then, the rest of it, your building aid ratio is 78.6%. So, 21 cents on every dollar is local share. And then, again, 78.6% is state aid. So, this, the way that we phased it in is that for prior meetings, the cost allowance for aid purposes resets every five years. So, the last capital project the district did will reset in October of '23. So, that's an important date in the sense of what we're talking about, boy, of phasing. So, we have Phase 1 being the elementary school projects. And then, Phase 2, we have the high school because it resets in October of '23 to generate the allowance to get, you know, more aid in that project. And then, Phase 3, we had the middle school. Again, those could be flip-flopped if needed, but for illustration purposes, we had high school as Phase 2 and then the middle school is Phase 3.
Was the aid ratio similar to the last big capital project that they went through? Or is this one because of the return and a lot of, so that'll work?
Well, there's history with the ratio. Yeah, the ratio, I mean, we've been working with the district for 20-plus years. The district had, in the past, merger aid incentive when the district merged with another district years ago, and they received merger incentive aid. But that has since lapsed, probably 10 years ago, maybe a little less than that. But the ratio that you have now is a little bit higher than it had been the last few years. So, it's been trending in the right direction. But of districts in Western New York, it's probably one of the higher ones. You know, some are a little bit higher, but most are low 70s, high 60s. So, certainly, you know, pretty positive ratio as far as districts in this area.
So, these numbers in red are after the manipulation of the phasing?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what we're taking advantage of is a full reset on the high school and middle school. And what's left over is the 9.1 million at the high school renovation. And that's just the turf project and the, you know, outside work that really drives that allowance as well as some of the other incidental costs, you know, outside the building. So, what we're left with is a $68.7 million project. And we'll talk briefly about the source of funds. So, we have serial bonds of $62 million. Capital reserve funds, which I think Laura will talk about, the other source of funds, as well as other district funds, which is the $3.2 million, which will be available, you know, over time, as well as the smart schools, which is $1 million dedicated to the Windermere addition project. So, it's an important source of financing as well. So, what we have is with the $11.1 million over allowance and then the 21 cents of, you know, money that's the local piece, what we've done was calculated the local share tax impact. And what we're looking at is a tax impact per thousand on the rate, which would be about 36 cents per thousand. And the tax rate impact is about 1.7%. And that's with the larger, you know, $68 million project in the amount that's over allowance. So, I think through the process of the Capitol Committee, we kind of arrived at something that's sort of, you know, palatable to the group. And, you know, from a tax impact perspective, it's, you know, not unusual to see that type of impact with other districts, at least in this area, certainly. And again, that begins in the '25 fiscal year, so it's not immediate. Because you think about the timing, Rashawn talked about, the time it goes through SED, gets approved, you know, shovels in the ground. It still figures out before the impact gets, you know, on the taxes.
What's the interest rate assumption that we're asked?
This site used a bond anticipation of 2% and then a bond rate of 2.5%, which, in normal circumstances, it's fairly conservative. You know, we're seeing bands, you know, 2.15, 2.20 in this environment. But again, we're talking about the first borrowing to be in, you know, almost two years out.
So, what would the, I don't know, what would it actually present to this project?
Well, there's sort of a natural hedge in the sense that the state's interest rates are tied to, like, borrowing rates. So, in the event that borrowing rates went up even more, the rate on the state aid would also increase. So, what we've assumed for model purposes is the state rate and the borrowing rate are consistent.
But what about the local share? Does that affect the local share?
Yeah, it does. You're talking about the piece that's not aided? Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, would it be safe to assume that if it's $62 million bonding and if 78% is the state, then 22% of that, which was maybe $14 million, $14, $15 million would be local share? So, the 1% on, you know, figure out MIB or might look at MIB.
Yeah, we'd certainly throw in the number here.
I mean, I just, I mean, I, you know, May 18th, you were buying 15 year, New York tax freeze of 4% apart. So, that was only two months ago. And I know they dip, but...
Yeah, I mean, the last couple of weeks have been pretty volatile. But, you know, three weeks ago, we still notes it 2%. So, that was a few in the market a couple of weeks ago. But certainly, you know, we still have two years ago before we start to look at the financing. But it's certainly a valid point, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we could ever be in a situation where we could predict what, with 100% accuracy, what our borrowing rate would be just given the nature of how capital projects unfold from vote to when you're actually borrowing.
Yeah, I mean, you recall, yeah, you recall as a board when we decided to convert the last project to bonds. And the time couldn't be any perfect, or perfect. Maybe we did long-term bonds that, you know, won 80-something. So, you just don't know, like, where the market's gonna end up, but it's hard to predict, you know, where rates are gonna be next week, let alone in June of '24 when we do the first borrowing.
I hope we feel this will be received by taxpayers. It's a huge amount of money. What was our last one, 34?
20...
30.
30. Yeah, 29.6. Well, I think that's the question that we had in the back of our mind the entire time we were at the committee prior to coming here. And I think that's really what, you know, we are looking for, you know, your input on is, you know, whether or not the community will support it. You know, based on, I think, the items we've selected for the scope, we're prioritizing, you know, health and safety and security. We certainly have athletics, the arts. We have a lot of work that is necessary in order just to continue to have our buildings function. Boiler work and, you know, a lot of the BCS work. So, it's a well-rounded scope from my, from that perspective.
I think it addresses some nice things that people would see too, the parking or the, you know, pickup and drop-off and, you know...
Well, for the auditoriums, like, the ventilation will provide more, you know, better airflow into those. So, the way they heat up will not be as much. And, you know, you could listen to Mrs. Flanagan at Windermere, and she talks about, you know, electrical issues they have in that auditorium, not even be able to use it because of lighting issues, what have you. You know, Mr. Rampado with the boilers and how much it's costing us in repairs these days for parts and labor and everything for all the stuff.
We're not convinced you explain all that, though.
No, but, you know, as I had said, you know, when we were in our committee, you know, when I was, I've been on the board 13 years, and I've heard the boiler can get kicked down the road for 13, you know, you keep kicking it down the road, and it's one of those things that we, you know, it was addressed as a need way back then, and we just keep kicking it. And here we are spending thousands. I mean, one part, I think you told us recently, was what, 15 grants, $18,000?
Right, the high school.
For some valve, big valve.
From gas actuators and regulators that are hitting the end of their useful life and replacing them before this point.
And some of that, you'll see more comfort being in the buildings, you know, when we all go to the auditoriums for things, where the comfort level will be better.
I think there's a couple of things. If you could just give a little color of, you know, how the committee, what you started with and what you're down to. And then, the other thing I think about when I look at this is, in the last five years, we've had a negative tax rate twice, right? So, 1.7% when we were just down, you know. I feel like it's not asking a ton. You know, it's not like we're doing what Amber's just doing and adding, you know, 7% to some things. But I do think it's reasonable. But I also have the benefit of having heard some of the color about what the project started with and how we've gotten it down to just the stuff that's needed.
The master kind of document that broke down all the, kind of looking at the building condition survey was over $200 million worth of needs.
Well, not needs.
Needs, yeah.
Well, needs and wants. I'm sorry, needs and wants.
Valid point.
Needs and wants. The, that was then broken down through prioritizing things to 120 million, of which 80-some million was kind of some needs and wants. And there was an extra 40 in there of other things if we wanted to go that level. And Mr. Gancy was around showing us what that might be in tax rate and what have you during all that time. So, then, as a group, and the committee initially started with all the building leaders, Mr. Rampado, Mr. Wheaton, Mrs. Bezinski, everybody was in a room. And then, that got broken down to just a smaller group of the committee where we kind of went through line by line of things. Like, do we need this? Is this necessary? I mean, we talked about, for example, maybe putting air conditioning in all the auditoriums. Well, when you look at the cost of that versus, you know, we just, it got cut out. So, that got then broken down to some different levels and different, you know, just because you've cut 10 million doesn't mean you're gonna change, for example, your tax rate because certain things may, the scope may change in terms of, we may be cutting more things that are aidable versus site work that we want to do, which may not be aidable. The, one of the things that cut back a little is the number of classrooms for the pre-K. So, that got, and that was just because of how much was aidable versus non-aidable. And it got shrunk down a little bit after talking to Mrs. Flanagan. So, it was looked at overall, and I forget when we looked at it, if we cut, I forget, it was like 10 million. I mean, we're only cutting... I mean, we're only cutting potentially six cents or seven cents from the, what the tax rate may go up. So, and then you look at what you may lose in the project. And so Dominic Mark and I were the board members on the committee, but we came to a consensus that we could live with thirty-six cents.
I'm not questioning the work of the committee.
No, no, I'm just.
I'm not looking for the justification. My question was, you know, how do we think that the community is gonna receive this? You know, do, I don't know what, you know, what they should say.
I personally thought by what we're.
Is there a marketing plan? Is there, you know?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely a marketing plan. I think you would see in the timeline, I'll go back just, you know, typically we have public meetings, newsletters, a month or two up, up prior to it. I remember when I first. Yeah, when I first started, we worked on a project, if you recall, I was hired in April. We worked on a project in the spring of twenty sixteen. And then in the fall of twenty sixteen, in advance of a vote, we visited everybody. You know, we went to P T As, boosters, you know, we met with some of the other organizations that we'd worked with, Lions Club, and it was typically myself and Melanie and I forgot his name. Jim was our architect at the time. Jim, you know, and we would, we had a pretty good presentation. You know, nowadays, there's, we used our website, we certainly would have a robust website. I think I'm starting to see in other projects that have been voted on recently, there's some nice videos that are being utilized that our team can certainly create then, so you can push them out through social media. You know, and again, that's why we try to target, you know, different things that will resonate with different people. We feel like, you know, in addition to the building for primary ed, the arts, athletics, health, safety, hits a lot of different priorities that come to people's minds when they think about what they want with, from their kids' schools.
As you, as you indicated, you know, it's hard to sell just replacing boilers and things. So, you know, some of the other stuff that people touch and feel, you know, whether it's a parent drop off, whether it's turf, whether it's, you know, auditorium upgrades with people experience, you know, we had to sell, put some thing, make sure things were in there that everybody got to experience.
Well, and one of the things that, I know, I know Rick mentioned it, I would just go back to highlight it. So Mrs. Wazinski, not to steal her thunder, will present to you where we landed with the audit and our fund balance or reserves. And, you know, we're expecting that we will have, you know, two point five million to add to our capital reserve. And then I think Rick, Rick mentioned it as three million dollars or, or three point two in other available funds. So we are going to identify those funds over the course of the next four or five years prior to going out and borrowing that will offset the local share. So the district contribution will be over five million dollars through, through essentially our capital reserve, some that we have on hand now and other funds that we know will be able to save. And then also the million dollars that we have for our smart schools bond allocation.
Yeah, so just to clarify on that, the two point five billion under, under state law has to be into the capital reserve account prior to the vote as the capital reserve. The three point two million dollars of other available funds is made available throughout the process of the construction. So this is a, you know, four to five year construction cycle. So as long as those funds are available in that period, those become available as payment for, for the project.
But to be clear, that's all the assumptions, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's not, we're exchanging, right?
No.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So the three point two is going into capital reserve fund, you know, this, that's our projection.
Two five.
No, two five now, but the other three two is something that we're assuming we're gonna be able to put in that capital reserve over the next several years?
Yes.
But that doesn't have to be in there prior to the vote?
No.
We just have to have something in there prior to the vote?
Well, you have to have the amount that you're saying you're using from the reserve. And then the terminology that is being, that is used is, and other available funds. So in the other available funds, you can make a reasonable estimate of what you'll have available.
So would that not go into that capital reserve fund? It would go somewhere else or would it be able to go in that reserve?
Um, you know, mechanically how it works, I think I've talked to Laura about it. I think more than likely it would go into the capital fund. And then that money would be used and we would borrow.
So once we vote, nothing else could go into that capital reserve?
For this vote, correct?
For this, for the, yeah, for this vote, so.
There'll be a transfer from general to capital.
Yeah, general to the capital fund, not the capital reserve. But then, you know, essentially when you get to the end and you're borrowing, you know, you're basically saying that your total amount, your sixty-eight point seven, is going to be less the two point five, you know, less the three point two, less the million for smart schools, which leaves you with a dollar amount that I didn't add up in my head as I was subtracting them all that you would actually be bonding and borrowing for.
So that capital reserve, and maybe we should wait until Laura's presentation, that capital reserve, that's the one we set up for ten million, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna put two point five presumably into it now. We can put more into it as we go along, but it wouldn't be useful for this project, is that the idea?
Correct, yeah, it would be, I think the reserve's life was ten years.
Ten years.
So it could be used for another project, but it would also.
Talking about.
Yeah, it would also be advantageous for us over the next several years to have that in a place where it's more available and less restricted as opposed to that two thousand twenty capital reserve. Because if it's less restricted, like fund balance or another reserve, it could then be used to generate the other available funds that eventually go into capital fund. Yeah, I guess the alternative would be if we, if we wanted to, would be to wait in order to build that reserve higher, if you wanted to make more available funds, but to me it's.
Available some other way.
Yeah, it's kind of six in one, half dozen in another. How much do you have in the reserve and then how much are we going systematically saving before we bond? And we conservatively thought three point two was the number we could hit without taking away programs and such from our budget over a five or six year period.
Does anyone have any questions for? All right, I'm gonna poll everybody about whether we can move forward with this, what is this, sixty-eight point seven? Sixty-eight point seven million dollar capital project? Mr. Bibo?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. And I am as well.
Thank you. I, I will add too, you all are aware and in tune with what's happening in the world nowadays. But Carlo, in particular, and the team did a really nice job with the cost estimates. And one of the things obviously we're facing is the inflation that we're experiencing as a country. So, you know, what, we wanna be conservative with the estimates, but we also know that that could, could come down. Hopefully it's not gonna go up even more. I mean, some prognosticators indicate that we may be on the way down. So it could also be, some of the things that we talked about could also be less than, than what we're talking about here. But we didn't wanna be in a situation where we have the community vote on something and then we can't deliver it because we were too conservative in our estimates. So they, the team did a very nice job. All of our, and all the input was very, very well put together and presented and scrutinized. So thank you to the committee and thank you to the team for all your hard work. So Rashaun, if I were just to go back to the next steps in terms of what the board might see following this, is we would, I don't know if you wanna pull your timeline back up. So we would expect to have a lot of work being done behind the scenes?
Yeah, so, so right now, so with, with the board's, you know, approval, now we can get into the secret process with the district's attorney to make sure that, that those legal items are all squared away. We will start producing, rendering these things of that nature to help sell the project, you know? And then, you know, we will come back in October, looking for the board to adopt the resolutions that are created and report with the vote.
Can I just mention one thing? I see that you have December sixth as a potential vote. November elections, we use Erie County machines. I don't think we'll be able to get them by then. So I know I spoke to the superintendent about baby making at the thirteenth.
Yeah. There was also, I think, a request from our attorneys relative to the secret process to push it back to the thirteenth as well. So we can iron that out as we get ready to prepare the publications for public and presentations. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the hard work and the presentation and the good questions and your support. So the second item that we wanted to talk about tonight, two of three here in the superintendent's report, is everybody's favorite topic, COVID-nineteen safety. So when we, back in August.
This could be an exciting presentation, but we'll be leaving. I, I know this is gonna be an exciting presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for dressing up, Derek.
Yeah, no problem.
A few, a few weeks ago, we received some updated guidance from the C D C. And we were notified by the state that we would get guidance this week for the upcoming school year. And I'm happy that the current administration broke with the norms of the previous administration and they gave us the guidance yesterday afternoon as opposed to Friday at five P M. So this gives us the opportunity to finalize our planning for the upcoming school year, communicate with our community, our parents, as well as our staff. And we'll be ready to open the doors to staff next week, Tuesday, and then the following Tuesday to our students. I think in general terms, one of the things that you'll see is that the guidance offers what I think many of us are hoping for, which is a return to normalcy within the school environment. There are a lot of recommendations, but there are very few mandates in that regard. So I'll give you sort of the overview. When this came out, the New York State Council of School Superintendents sent out a summary. And you'll notice that most of the things they put in the summary are things that existed in the past that are now removed from the current guidance. And a lot of things that caused, you know, a lot of difficulty for us as we were trying to implement in-person instruction. So students and staff are no longer required to quarantine if they've been, if they believe they've been exposed to COVID-nineteen. Test to stay is gone. Students and staff who test positive for COVID-nineteen are going to isolate for five days. And then when they return to school, it's recommended that they mask for five days. Universal masking is not required at this time, but they do give local health departments the authority to implement masking requirements if community levels get to a point or levels within a school get to a point where they feel as though it's necessary or dangerous. Schools are no longer required to offer or conduct screening testing. Screening testing was, you know, basically a ten percent sampling of asymptomatic people that was conducted. We offered it on a voluntary basis. I think we had very few families out of our three thousand, we had less than one hundred that signed up to be part of that program. So through that screening testing last year, when we offered it, we were only testing, you know, a handful of kids every week. So I, I think they don't, C D C or the state no longer recommend that. Schools are not required to test unvaccinated staff any longer. We are also not required to report daily test results to the D O H on that dashboard as well. If we do, if we do offer testing as a school, we do have to do so under limited service lab certificate, which we have, and we would have to report that as an approved lab. But I think we found with the availability of at-home tests and the anticipated availability that we're hearing from the governor's office that will continue to get that the testing program, diagnostic testing from the school is no longer a necessity. And then contact tracing, so if you're not identifying, if you're not requiring quarantining, there's definitely not a need for contact tracing. And that was a very labor-intensive process that our administrators and nurses mainly led. So there is, we are not required to conduct contact tracing. We do continue to implement or employ a layered approach to mitigation strategies. So I think the Swiss cheese model is what it's often referred to for virus prevention. You know, not one, no one piece of Swiss cheese or no one layer of mitigation will in and of itself stop the virus. However, when you layer multiple mitigation strategies on top of them, you are increasing the effectiveness and the likelihood or, or, you're decreasing the likelihood that it will spread in, in the buildings. So our plan essentially focuses on these bulleted items here. We're going to continue to make information available to our community, staff and students about vaccinations and hope they choose that as a layer of mitigation for their family. We do know that, or recent reports are indicating that a vaccine booster targeting Omicron subvariant B A four, B A five should be available this fall. They're saying within the next couple of weeks, as long as it gets F D A approval. That would initially be for twelve and up, and then I'm sure five to twelve would be not too far behind that. So that will be good because it seems as though the Omicron subvariants have evaded some of the previous vaccinations. You know, we are asking people to stay home when they're sick or symptomatic. At this point, you know, we would, if a student is symptomatic in school, we would have them in the nurse's office and they would be masked and they'd be asked to be picked up. And then as long as they are fever-free for twenty-four hours and their symptoms are improving, they could return to school. We will make available at-home tests and we will encourage parents to test their kids if they're symptomatic prior to sending them to school. So that will be helpful with the availability of the tests. I've mentioned already, isolate if you're COVID-positive for five days. And when you return to school, it is recommended that you wear a mask for five days. Masking is certainly something we expect a lot of our students and staff to employ as a strategy on their own. We will create an environment within the school where, I think it's referred to as a mask-positive environment, you know, where kids can feel and staff can feel free to wear a mask as they feel fit without feeling as though they are, there's repercussions or they would be stigmatized. Again, testing seems to be one of the main strategies that the state and local, state and federal officials are talking about. And we do expect to have at-home tests available to us and we'll continue to make them available to our families when we get them. We have a good amount from last year that we're going to deploy to staff and students when we return. And then as the, the new ones come in, we'll continue to push them out through our student handouts that we've been doing. Ventilation and air purification are two of the main areas of focus and main layers of mitigation. All classrooms have air purifiers in them. We were thankful that our partners at the county purchased air purifiers for all of our classrooms. Prior to them purchasing them, we also purchased some of our own. So we have a healthy stockpile of air purifiers for all of our spaces in, within our buildings. As you may recall from the beginning, all of our HVAC systems were equipped with Merv thirteen filters, which filter a higher level of particulate, which is where the virus is carried. Mr. Rampado does change those out every. Mr. Rampado does change those out every six months, so we have a six-month supply that are in our, that's in our HVAC system, and then we have a six-month supply in our inventory. And as we, you know, every December when they swap those out, we put the new ones in and we order the new ones, so we have them for the summer. So we're continuing to add air pur, MERV-13s to our HVAC system. We encourage windows to be open, weather permitting, to increase ventilation, and we're also continuing to run our HVAC system at a greater capacity, and we keep it in occupied mode at all times, so we're constantly circulating air. Before COVID, I think we were bringing in 10% fresh air, and under the new guidelines, we are bringing in 30% fresh air in our system. And again, we used to have a setback system where it would turn off when we were unoccupied in the afternoons and evenings and overnight. We keep it running all the time in order to keep the air circulating and filtering. We will continue to educate our students on proper hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and in addition to that, we're going to continue to make available hand sanitizer stations. We have them mounted on the walls in all of our occupied spaces, and we also have the portable ones that we also have ordered, and we also have Clorox wipes that we have in all of our classrooms. And again, continue our thorough cleaning and disinfecting of our facilities on a daily basis. So I think when we look at this guidance, you know, it offers us an opportunity to return to, you know, pretty much pre-2019 norms, and it hopefully puts COVID in an appropriate place at this point in the pandemic, which is maybe in the backseat, and puts our focus back on in-person instruction and, you know, getting our kids connected to school and enjoying in-person learning, all the things that we have to offer. Some next steps. I'm scheduled to meet with the Erie One Bosse superintendents tomorrow, just to review the guidance from the state and make sure that we're all on the same page with how it's being interpreted. I then plan to meet with our administrative cabinet to finalize our COVID-19 safety plan, and then once the plan is finalized, I will be pushing an update out to faculty, staff and parents next week. Any questions? The last part of the superintendent's report is our reserves and fund balance. Mrs. Bezinski? Are you still awake?
Absolutely. I feel like a bobblehead. I was agreeing with everything. So this presentation will be where we're anticipating ending, the end of June. We have a handful of entries left to make in our audit that will be finalized over the next week or so, but we will review where we believe that fund balance is going to end. This is the opportunity for us to discuss where we want any additional funds to go into our reserves and then answer any questions that we have. So previously, we thought we were going to add about 800, just over 800,000. We're landing at about 782,000. So our revenues came in about 1.6 above what our projections were, and the majority of that was based on some building aid that wasn't included in the state aid runs the prior year that we did end up getting during the year. And then the appropriated fund balance and reserves are the appropriation that we made during budget development, as well as some changes that we had during the year due to some unforeseen expenses. So those two netted together showed a revenue deficit of 674,000, but that's because we had appropriated more reserves than we had originally planned, fund balance and reserves. On our appropriation side or expenditure budget, it show, we show that we have about 1.5 million unexpended, and about 730 of that, which we'll see in the later slide, are on purchase orders that we're going to carry forward into the next year. So they were things that we either purchased or services that we had planned for during the current year, but for whatever reason, the services either weren't finished or we didn't receive the goods in time to be able to make payments in the year. So we have the ability to carry those POs forward into the next year, so those funds go right along with it so that we're not negatively affecting our next year's budget. So overall, we have a budgetary surplus of 782,000, and the revenue was about 2% over our budget. Our expenditures was about 2% under our budget, and when you combine both of them together, we had a .6 differential on our revenue and expenditure budget combined. So that just shows the great work that the board is doing, that the administrative team is doing, not only in the budget development process, but also throughout the year in our, with our expenditures.
Also leaves room for improvement.
A little bit, .6%. .6%. So we began the current year at 9.8 million in total reserves and fund balance. We're adding 782,000, which will bring us to about 10.6 million in total fund balance and reserves. So now we need to make the decision on where we're going to put those funds. So this is a repeated slide that we had in our last presentation. It's just a recap of what our long-range reserve plan is that we adopted last November, and it just shows what our balance was on our reserves, the room that we have in each reserve to be reasonably funded at 13 million with a total maximum revenue or reserve budget of 17 million. So that's our, that's our maximum. So this slide, we also use less time spent updated to the 10.6 million, but these are recommendations that we have for you and based on the amount of money that we have in our reserves and fund balance and where we think it should be. So let's start from the bottom up, because that's the biggest change that we have. On appropriated fund balance, it was 4.25 million. That was 6% of our budget, so we were out of compliance, and that was a decision that we made based on COVID and unplanned expenditures. But now we want to, we're at the point where we can get back into compliance, which is 4% of next year's budget, which is 2.7 million, which means we have $1.5 million of funds that need to be moved somewhere, pushed up somewhere. Our carryover encumbrances coming into the 2122 school year, we had 719,000, 720,000. This year going into next, we have 734,000, so that was an increase of 14,000. So we do like to see that stay consistent because then it doesn't necessarily affect our other reserves, so that was pretty consistent from one year to the next. Appropriated fund balance was a discussion and a decision we made during budget development where we increased our contingency line from 860,000 to $1 million, which is where that additional 194,000 comes from. And then everything above the line are our reserves. You see the two capital reserves that we have, the 2017 reserve is currently funded at 300,000 with a maximum of 500,000, and then the newest reserve, the 2021 reserve, is the reserve we talked about a few minutes ago, which is a 10-year reserve, $10 million. So at this point, we're recommending to fully fund the smaller reserve, 500,000, which is an addition of 200,000, and then to put an additional $2 million into the big reserve. So that's where the $2.5 million came from that Mr. Gansy referenced. That would be in our, both of those would be in our reserves going forward into capital project vote, if it's approved by the voters. When we expensed those funds, the small reserve of 500,000 would then close because we wouldn't be allowed to put any more money into it because we would have funded it to its maximum funding level of 500,000, so we would close that. And then the larger reserve, the two, which would have 2 million in it, we would expense the 2 million, but we would be able to leave that reserve open for future funding, up to another $8 million for a later project. As we talked about, it wouldn't be any funds that would be available for the current project that we're proposing, but it could be a source for us to put funds for future projects. The next change above that is our tax surcharge reserve. It's currently at 463,000, and we had talked about reducing it about 349,000, and that's based on current litigation and potential liability that we have out there with some open cases. And the $114,000 balance that would remain is at a reasonable level for some of the litigation that's outstanding. And then the balance would be funded into, recommended funded into the TRS reserve. So the TRS reserve can take up to 2% of prior year TRS salaries, which is less, which is more than 247,000, but where we landed with our fund balance, that would be the balance that we'd be able to move up into there. So again, these are recommendations based on the work that we're doing with capital credit and some of the areas that we felt could be changed in the reserves. These also are well within the adopted resolutions by the board that happened in June. We're well within the resolutions that were passed, so we have the authority legally to make those transfers by the end of August, so we'll do that next week if the board is in agreement. But this is the opportunity for us, we made those decisions in June without knowing where we'd land. So the board approves up to a certain dollar amount. We come back when we have a better idea of what the audit looks like, have the discussion, and make sure that we're all still good with those decisions.
Can we go back to the previous? Yeah. So this would be the time to make any adjustments to the recommendations that we have there. Or voice your approval for the recommendations we have there.
We've been talking about the, that number to reduce the tax surcharge amount for a year. Is that still an appropriate number to reduce it to?
The tax surcharge law allows us to have the maximum liability that we have outstanding for up to four years. So we've been carrying the 463,000 for a couple of years, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to see a spike or any major changes, but it's been relatively consistent, and the balance will cover our current liability. In the future, if we did have an increase for whatever reason, we would then have the ability to increase that reserve again.
So I'll pull the board again, if everybody's okay with the recommendations or not. Sorry, Mrs. Goldbach.
And any recommendations?
Mrs. Aaron.
I'd actually like to put it all in the capital reserve.
It's an option, and we thought about...
Only because there's risk to handle that. Not having it, that's a lot.
So Mr. Gansy was talking to you about the 2.5 million in the reserve versus 3.2 million of other available funds. That is a relatively newer thought process, perfectly legal, and we're absolutely able to do it. We just have to be very careful that that 3.2 million is actually there when we need it, because otherwise it'll negatively affect our tax impact. On the flip side, if we're able to save more than 3.2 million or we have more in our reserves, it'll further reduce that tax impact. So whether it's 2.5 million or 2.75 million, we can redo those numbers. We wanted it to be 2.75 million, you know, we can do that.
So is TRS, is that, then it's new?
Yes, the TRS sub-fund is new.
And you can only fund that in a particular way, so many years?
2% of the prior year's TRS salaries, and you can't have more than 10% at any given time.
So what, what does the 2% have?
It's less than 2%. 2% was 422,000, so it's like 1%, about 1%. Our TRS salaries are about 23, 24 million.
So the, the capital reserve is 100%... If the capital project passes, it's 100% of that money will be spent. There's no advances or what's about that, and that's the, the TRS may or may not.
Right, the TRS would be there to help us smooth drastic increases to our rate in future year budgets. So we do have just under a million dollars in there now, 964,000, but with our taxable, with our TRS salaries at $23 million, 1%, 2%, all need to be absorbed by the local budget before it can affect our tax cap. So the first 2% of an increase needs to be within the cap before it's considered an exclusion.
That's where it's going to be.
And it's currently 10.3%.
And it went up this year.
And it went up, yeah. I mean, it's been as high, at least in my tenure as an administrator in the district going back to 2012, I think that we've seen it as high as 20% and as low as, you know, 7.5. So it's based on a five-year snapshot of the market and the fund, so...
And 2%, if it, so the first 2% of any rate increase for TRS, we're required to absorb before it hits our tax cap. So that's 5 million, or half a million dollars. So 500,000 is a lot of a hit in one budget year to year. So the purpose of that TRS reserve would be to help smooth that. So maybe we would allocate 250, like if it went up 2%, maybe we'd absorb 250,000 in budget and then use 250 of that to help smooth it. But those, those would be decisions we would make during budget development.
Can we typically don't pick that number until February?
Right.
On what it's going to be for the following year?
Mrs. Bezinski, could you remind me with the reserves, are they, are we able to move money from the, other than the capital ones? Are we able to move money, as we are from the tax surcharge? We, the board, have the ability to move the money around, correct?
Each, each one has different rules and laws tied to it. So even when we believed that the tax cert was possibly overfunded, we consulted with our school attorneys to make sure that we could do it legally. And in that particular reserves instance, we can deem it overfunded, and then that money goes back into general fund, which then makes our surplus a little higher, which is how we then move it up into a different reserve. There are some reserves where you can transfer direct to direct to one to the other, some need to only go back to taxpayers, like every reserve has a different law behind it.
Actually, so the EBLR, the EBLR, I know at one point a few years ago, we thought that we could actually use it for something, and...
We do use it. That 857 used to be, I want to say, close to 1.2, 1.3 million, and that we had appropriated into our budget a couple of times to help pay for retirement payments at the end of the school year.
So retiring is that?
Yes, we do that during budget development, though. So we have specific lines in our budget for those payments. We never know what they're going to be because we don't know who's retiring until February or March of the next year, but we do, if our budget is tight or if we're concerned about having shortfalls, we do have the ability to make an appropriation from that reserve. So that one in particular, we have used over the last five years.
Are you okay then with the recommendations?
Yep. I think for the simple sake, again, that money going to be spent on this project is passed. I mean, the same logic would be is, you know, if we're going to be doing that, we can fund that. I mean, unless, I don't recall that we were trying to get to a particular number on TRS, maybe we were. And this gets us closer to it.
I think we have been trying to get to a particular number on TRS, or at least fund it as well as we can each year because of the drastic amount of money that it costs when there is an increase.
And because of the limitation in how we're allowed to fund it. Regardless of what your budget looks like, you can't ever put more than 2% of prior year TRS salaries in it.
Which is what, what's 2%?
Pardon?
What's, what's 2%? 5, 8%?
22.
Or last year's.
So I mean, if next year, when we have a surplus...
Or what if we don't have a surplus?
Well, let's put it this way, in the next three years, we need that surplus.
Yeah, we will need...
We do.
For the capital project.
We need it, yeah.
There will be several tools that we'll use to make sure that we're getting that goal. We'll be discussing a lot of them during budget development.
Yeah, and it's more than, it's more than three years. I think it, it's throughout the construction process, so it wouldn't be until we are going out to bond that we would have to have the 3.2, so I, I can't recall the exact... So I, I can't recall the exact timeline of the schedule, but I believe it wouldn't be until 2027. So it's more five years. But I think when we were talking about it at the capital committee, we were using four as our benchmark just to be conservative.
And, and that is a conservative, big, a conservative date because technically that 3.2 million needs to be in the capital fund. You were absolutely correct when you were explaining that before. It won't go into the reserve, will go into the, directly into the capital fund as an interfund transfer. It needs to be there before we make our final payment on the project, which will be at the end of construction, after it's approved, three phases. It could be upwards of seven years. So we will have time. But it needs to be in there before the final payment is made.
So we would have potentially this discussion five to seven more times where we could make these similar decisions. But I've seen, how do I word this? It would not have been presented tonight if Mrs. Bezinski wasn't comfortable with it in, as an option. You know, I think she has had multiple opportunities to say to the committee, wait a minute, I don't believe other available funds of 3 million is attainable and I don't support that. And of course, we would have heard that loud and clear. You know, she.
And it's not only district funds. It could be donations. It could be support from outside sources. Like we have a good handful of years to not only save ourselves, but put that plan into place to make sure that we're reaching that goal. And again, I mean, we could come up with more than 3.2 million. That just means when we do our final borrowing, it's less than what our plan is and we're just lowering our tax impact. Like that's totally within our rights. And we'll make sure that the entire process is very transparent. We will talk about it when we do budget development. We will talk about it when we do our long-range reserve plans. We do them in November, we do them in June. Budget development is almost every meeting between December and April. So it'll be very transparent in the next handful of years. Not only where the money is coming from, but how much we have and how much more we have left to go.
I'm okay with recommendations as well.
Thank you.
Are we leaving it like this then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. We will need a motion for new business items then.
Make a motion for new business items, E1, A, B, 2, B through E.
We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A and B, and 2, B through E, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
No.
All right, then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
Make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding mitigation and employment of a particular person.
We have a second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Patrick, thank you for coming.